Order, we could all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming out this evening. Cold night out there. Just have a couple of things I need to mention. First, with the most recent vote, the election of board members, would like to welcome Alan Walton back for a second term. Congratulations, Alan. And our new member representing District One will be Jennifer Rich Smith. And I talked to Robin. Robin is going to be here at some point tonight. And I told her on the phone, but just as part of the public record, would like to thank Robin for her service on the board. She's been a great addition, added a nice balanced viewpoint, and I think she's brought a nice element to the board and helped us move a lot of things forward during some difficult times. And here she is. Just again, Robin wanted to thank you for your service on the board.
Thank you. I have enjoyed it. It has been a challenge, and I will miss it, but...
Life goes on.
Life goes on, yes.
I also need to mention, again, thanks to all of the board members, Dave Richards with Facilities, Patrick, all the folks in Central Office, our public members who helped out on the bond. The bond issue did pass. And Dave, be careful what you wish for, because now you've got your work cut out for you. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in these schools, and he's the guy who now has the money. So we will be moving forward with that process. Items will be going out for bid. There is a formal process that happens with that bond. You can contact Central Office if you're interested. And the hope is to get the majority of that work at least started this spring and into the summer, and perhaps there are some other projects that we can work around the schools during the wintertime. We need to remind me, at the end of the meeting, we need to change the date on the December meeting. So with that said, those are my comments. We'll move on to item 4.0, approve and amend minutes of October 28. Is there a motion? Move to accept by Alan. Seconded by Steve. Take a minute to look those over, see if you have any comments, changes, additions. Okay, and regarding the minutes, particularly tonight, Vita was unable to attend, so I would ask, as board members speak, that you make a point of speaking into the microphone, because when she does the minutes, she will be going from the recording of this meeting. So just a reminder this evening, be sure you've got a microphone. There's a motion on the table to approve the minutes from October 28. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unopposed, passes. Okay, we will move on to adjustments to the agenda. Item 5.0, any adjustments to the agenda? Patrick?
Just two things. One is Dick Ranigan, who's here tonight, should be under Finance Committee report instead of Facilities. So we want to just make that adjustment as far as the order we go with tonight. And then I would like to add on, someplace on our new business, just recommendation to the board regarding financial advisory services for the bond as well as bond council. So I don't know where you'd like to put that on.
Why don't we make that item 11.7? Okay, were there any other adjustments to the agenda? Patrick, did you have anything else? No? Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to item 6.0, public comment. We do have two public comment sections during this meeting. The first one is for items related to the agenda. We would ask that comments be kept to two minutes. The second one comes at the end of the meeting, and those are open to the public to speak about anything and take the time that you need. So I'll now open this up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on items on the agenda? Okay. Now, we will move on to item 7.0, staff and student report. We have one presentation this evening, and I'll turn that over to Patrick.
So we have Lawrence Kovacs here tonight, gifted a paddle teacher for the system. Lawrence, the mic's right here if you guys want to use it.
This guy?
Yeah. This guy turning it on. And Lawrence, I'm gonna guess here, but one is Jane Norman?
That's correct.
And the other one, I'm guessing, is Joshua Laguardia?
That's correct.
Right, okay. Those are the only two students we have tonight?
Yes.
And so we, as a system, we've been doing quite a bit with robotics, and I feel it educational for Lawrence and the students to come here tonight, and the parents that are up there, grandparents that brought the students. Thank you. I know it's another night in the room, and guys, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Manuel, where's Chef's Dance? I won't feed. Josh, would you turn that thing a little bit towards the back of the room? Just rotate it. Something in that way. That's, that looks good. I'm Lawrence Kovacs, and I know nothing about robots or robotics, but I'm learning, and these guys are teaching me. We discovered that the system had a bunch of LEGO robotic kits. Can I disconnect this one, Josh? So this little brick, this thing is programmable, and it can control up to three motors, and it can get messages from up to four sensors. So as part of the software that controls these things, I got an addition that is engineering challenges, and kids have to program these things to do basic tasks in the beginning, and they get more and more complicated. Jane very generously took her time and created a PowerPoint that we're gonna go through really quickly. And these guys are gonna demonstrate a couple of their robots, and then maybe you have a few questions for them. Also, if you click on the play part. Yeah, I don't know why it's... Well, the good news is it's there. The bad news is it might not look as pretty as we wanted it to. Let's see what happens. They're not talking to each other. Do I dare disconnect and reconnect? So we have about five, actually now we have six programmable brains, which is a bit of a challenge, because kids, I have more kids than I have robot brains, and so they have to sort of problem solve and figure out who's gonna use what on what day. Yeah, still doing it. Is it okay if I just show it like this?
Sure.
Okay. So there are 15 kids building robots in this class. Why do we do it? So this is a bot that Josh built last week called the Slow Climber. I don't know if it'll play the video or not.
Well, it's played on this.
It's playing it on my computer, but you can't see. But Josh got it to go up about 40 degrees. Why do we build robots? This is super teeny tiny. I'll read it for you. It teaches through discovery, so it's, it is learning through doing. Kids try stuff, if it doesn't work, they try something different. It helps with numeracy competence. You have to decide what your robot is looking for or doing, how far it will go. Are you gonna measure rotations, degrees of rotation, number of rotations, distance? It gives you a hands-on experience with math and science, especially building and construction and design. The programming especially makes you think logically. And an example is, I tried to program this thing at home, this little mini-bot. Just before I came here, I was messing with it, and I showed Josh my program, which was supposed to make this thing go forward, and if it got about four centimeters from something, it was gonna go backwards. And he looked at my program and said, "That's way more complicated than it needs to be." So like I said, I don't know a lot about robotics or programming, but I'm, you know, we're all learners, so these guys are teaching me. We follow the engineering design process, which is basically, you can start anywhere in a circle. It doesn't matter where, but it is a circle and it is a cycle. So I give them some task, they imagine what it might, I've asked them, you know, how can we make a robot that goes one meter straight? They imagine how to do that, they make a plan, they try it. Maybe it works just like they thought, probably not the first time. They improve it, and we go round and round again until it's as good as it can be. And that was the first challenge, make a robot that goes a meter. Second challenge was make a robot that goes 30 centimeters with no wheels. Those were really cool. So the Mindstorms kits, they're made by LEGO. They're pretty expensive, and I'm hoping to, you know, over the next few years, build up a stable of robots that we can program. Each brain, a six-pack of brains, costs, I think, I think it's around $1,300. So if, you know, you're going Christmas shopping, each one of these EV3 kits without the software is about $300 and something. $60. Oh, and along those lines, we have, I didn't purchase a site license, which is a really good deal, meaning any computer in our system can use the LEGO software. So kids can program even if they don't have a bot, they can mess around with the program. The new software allows you to see, it animates what's happening when you press go. So you need one of those intelligent bricks, what I keep calling the brain. You need a set of connectors and hats, basically Legos, and everybody's got Legos. We have bins and bins of LEGO parts, and then you just need a computer with the software on it. Unfortunately, as of now, you cannot program these things with the iPad. You need a hard connection through a USB, and iPads don't have a USB connector. You can remote control them with an iPad, though. This is the new brick, and you can see it's different from the ones that these guys have. Yeah, Josh is holding up an old NXT. So you put them together the way that you want, and you have to put that intelligent brick somewhere on there. The challenge for these guys this year, since we only have five or six working ones, is they're sharing the bricks. Each brick holds about seven programs. So an example is, somebody came in today and said, "Where's my brain?" And somebody harvested it from another robot and put it on their bot and written a program on that. So, you know, if we had one of those bricks for each kid, it would be really great. So like I said, it connects through the USB to a computer. Jane wonderfully summarized everything. You can get experience in programming and learn the basics of writing computer code. This is pretty basic stuff. They're not learning computer languages like C++ or C++, but you are starting to think about how a machine processes information. Gives everybody the opportunity to learn about working partnerships, collaborating, cooperating, brainstorming. It's amazingly creative. I can't emphasize that enough. I give everybody the same task, and I get wildly different creations that all do the same thing. Robots let you explore many aspects of engineering, design, construction, innovation, creativity, problem solving, and redundancy in design, so if something fails, hopefully something else will take its place. Thanks for listening. And I didn't mention, before these guys show their stuff, so there's a competition in May that they will all be going to, where we compete against other schools in a, they call it a robot track meet. Fastest robot, strongest robot. Last year, I had a student, Devin, his robot pulled 60 pounds of weight across the gym floor. You know, it wasn't much bigger than this. There are also programs where robots have to basically be autonomous, they have to go and knock things off of tables and not fall off. Some of them do fall off, and it's pretty dramatic, because they are Legos and they crash to pieces. But yeah, here, let me hand it over to Josh, who's gonna show you a bot that he built. I think he built this last spring, right?
Yeah.
In like five minutes, maybe?
No, it took me like, this...
Talk right into it.
This bot, this bot is... This bot is a glove, I guess, you call it, that I built last year, and we didn't end up having enough time to program it. And it doesn't always work. But most of the bots we built last year ended up getting taken apart, except for this one and one other one.
How does that thing know to open and close? What sensor are you using?
Touch, right? Touch sensors, you press the buttons and it sends a message to the motors, which turn nine degrees and close it.
One thing about this is, these, so there are sensors, these are touch sensors, they're basically on and off, that's it. It's not like a rheostat, you know, the lights, you can dim them a certain amount. This says go or not go. So, you know, there are some limitations in the sensors, but it's pretty cool. I wish my hand fit in there. Doesn't, I think Josh barely does anymore. Jane, did you wanna talk about robots at all?
No, you're good.
This was, this is so sort of zen and simple. Somebody, I asked them to program it to go a meter, and it's basically one motor, a brain, and it goes, I might have changed the program, let's see what happens. I don't know if the camera can see that. Yeah, I reprogrammed it. I was trying, like I said, to make this, this is a distance sensor, it's a ultrasonic sensor, that's what it's called. It's a bouncy sound off. Did you guys have any questions about any of the stuff that they talked about? Great question. Some are rechargeable, some are not. This thing does have a battery pack, that's the equivalent of four AA batteries, so this one is rechargeable. Many of them are not, yet. The new EV3 is rechargeable.
Do they make kits that are sold powerable, mobile, data cells, or any new technology like that?
LEGO does not, that I know of. There is a Kickstarter robot company in Boulder, Colorado, that's called, I don't remember what it's called, but it's gonna be a competitor of LEGO, it's very cool looking. Less, less possibilities for programming, but more possibilities for construction. It's all magnets. It's all like those super, it's, it's iron spheres held together with superpower magnets. The club is grade seven and eight, and there's an application process. I basically ask kids to write a paragraph talking about why they wanna do it, and then another paragraph about what they would bring to the team. And this year, it worked out that pretty much everybody who applied got in. I think as it grows, it's gonna be more competitive, and also kids have to be doing their work in their regular classes. We meet during GP, Guided Practice, which is basically a study hall at BMS from 7:30 a.m. to 8:15, two days a week. So some kids, if they have work they need to do, they need to take care of that before they come and build. But it really is, my, my goal in this is to create possibilities. I am not a robot expert. These guys know a lot more about this than I do, but I want them to have the opportunity to explore and try new things and work with each other and listen to each other's ideas and try and solve problems collaboratively. So it's really exciting. You know, I think, I think actually Dean used them when he was teaching here. I'm not exactly sure where they came from. I know there was also like a robotics program before I was in this position, and I'll bet Josh can speak to that more than I could. But they were taken about, and they weren't being used. And Josh was actually the inspiration, I met Josh, I was his fifth grade teacher. He's a sharp guy, and he shared his love for Legos with me, and so, you know, I thought that'd be a good way for him to keep learning, we could use Lego. So he's taught me a lot about this.
Do the students get credit for this?
They don't get credit, but they do get points toward, totally blank, I don't know what it's called, but basically in BMS, you can accumulate points towards certain recognitions. So they do get those, but no, they're not graded, they're not given official credit.
And based on the competition that you talked about, you said that was in May, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are you following, do you develop your own curriculum, or do you follow a curriculum that is supplied by like LEGO robots?
So there really isn't a curriculum for the track meets. There's sort of these, there are at least two tiers of LEGO competition. There's something called the First LEGO League, which is really expensive and intense and all encompassing. The track meets are sort of like First LEGO League, right? You show up, you do your event, you go home, as opposed to having to submit different kinds of media and written reports. So having said that, last year, the curriculum was, we're gonna make the fastest bot we can, how can we do that? And it was a lot of trial and error, talking about gearing and programming. This year, like I said, I did, I ponied up for the LEGO Robotics Design Engineer portion of the software. So that is set by LEGO, and the challenges that I'm giving these guys each week follow the, sort of the scaffolding of the LEGO brand curriculum. So make it move is the first one, then we start talking about building autonomous robots.
Lawrence, though, the, I mean, Maine Robotics runs the track meets, and Maine Robotics sets the events, there are specific events that they can do, and it is all run by Maine Robotics, and they set, I think they do the First LEGO League too, but...
They do, they do both.
First LEGO League is more like a LEGO obstacle course for robots, it's pretty, plus the paperwork, but that's pretty neat too.
Yeah.
The kids, they run a summer camp for kids, and they do some of that there, and it's pretty neat.
This is a statewide competition?
Is it what?
A statewide competition?
Yes. First LEGO League, I think, is more than statewide. You would know more about that than me, of course.
I don't, I think it, I don't know. I haven't been to a First LEGO League competition, but I think they do. The high school level certainly is. So the high school level, they go to another level of robot, and they definitely have national competitions at the high school level. They build way more after robots. It's really neat.
Yeah, at the track meet that we were at last year, you know, college kids come and show robots they've been working on, high school kids, and it's pretty mind blowing. There's one of those chucking frisbees, that was very popular. There's one of those shooting baskets. But, you know, I, this is not the stuff that I get crazy about. I much prefer to go bike riding or hiking. But I was really blown away when I went to the track meet, I was really excited, I didn't know what to expect, and it's just, it's very exciting. And some of it is, you know, it's like the train wreck you can't stop looking at when that robot that's supposed to clear cans falls off, you know, blows up. But it really is, is very, very exciting, and the kids are just so invested, and the ideas are completely, they're just so diverse, it's hard to describe, and they're all trying to do the same thing, and many of them are successful with vastly different designs.
Are there any other questions from the board? What more can the board do to help you out?
Well, I'm gonna be writing into my budget this year, hopefully some funds to keep adding to our stock of robot brains. That's the real, that's the crux right now. We've got Legos, I'm sure if I put it out there to the community, I would get buckets of Legos gladly donated to us from kids who've grown up and moved on. So, you know, I'd love to get some more programmable Mindstorms or EV3 bricks, so that more kids could really get involved with the programming aspect, which I think is really important.
Do you think with more brains, you could expand the program to 115?
Yeah, so that's a great question, actually, about expanding the program. So I've been in conversation with Principal Sol at Woolwich, he's really interested, and I've been sharing some numbers, he was just asking what stuff costs. So I would love to see this happen district-wide, and right now, I'm not doing this at Woolwich, but Tom has expressed interest in moving in that direction. So I'd love to see that happen, I think it'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Josh. Is it Joshua or Josh?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, thank you, Joshua.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys, for coming.
Okay, next item is committee reports. We'll begin with item 8.1, Finance Committee Report, and I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thanks. Our finance committee met, I guess it was a couple weeks ago now, we discussed, primarily, the discussion was in two parts, some follow-up questions and issues related to the bond, which passed, and that just after the community's vote, and so we were able to address a few issues that arose out of the result of the vote. And we also previewed and reviewed the schedule for the committee's review and input on the annual budget, and at some point, that will put out that calendar again, as we swing into budget mode already. I think at this point, sure, yeah. Dick Ranigan is here from Lauren Saban, and we thought it would be useful to have him, for the full board, and for the committee, to have him talk through some of the process that we'll have to undertake to put our bond together and secure, actually security dollars for which we now have authorization to spend on our projects, so.
I think it's on now.
Thank you very much. I planned on having seven board members and a superintendent, and those are the number of packets that I put together. So, if you wouldn't mind sharing and passing those around, maybe every other person. There's only a couple of pages in this, on this very brief presentation. My name is Dick Rannigan and I work for Gorham Savings Bank and I do bond issues for cities and towns and school districts, county government throughout Maine and New Hampshire. When local governments borrow money, they do it one of two ways. They either issue their bonds on their own or they issue them in collaboration with the Maine Municipal Bond Bank in a pooled arrangement. Many municipalities nowadays are finding that they are selling as good, if not better, by going on their own. The bond bank has, in their portfolio generally now, mostly water districts and sewer districts, which are not full faith and credit obligations. And so, they tend not to sell as well as general obligation financing. And so, the city of Bath and our issue one are typical issuers that issue debt on their own. We issued back in 2011 a $16 million bond issue. I sent around two examples. One was one I just did for the Thalmud Schools and the other is the one for the Woolwich School that we did a couple of years ago. So, you have issued your own bonds in the past, just like the city of Bath does. I just did a bond issue recently for renovation of the Covent County Civic Center. So, whether it be schools or county government or municipalities, they're all general obligation bonds that we're talking about. In this case, the voters approved your request for $5.2 million to finance the improvements to Moss High School and some other projects that will be financed over a 10-year period. Right now, the bond market that we're looking at, which is tax dependent, which allows you to borrow rates that lower than the commercial sector, on a 10-year bond issue, we're in the 2% to 2.5% range. Rates went up in July, but have tended to come back down a little bit as we move into the fall. And so, it's been a good time to issue. Town of Thalmud issued a 20-year issue at just under 3%. They're a very highly rated community. The rating that we got for our issue one in 2011 was A+. There goes highest AAA, there's three grades of AA, there's three grades of A. So, you're at the top end of the A range. It would be our hope that through this process, that we would be able to get the rating elevated. We would work very closely with the rating agency to put the best foot forward of our issue one. And certainly, it's all the communities that are the underpaid for our issue one that drive the rating. So, the process takes about 10 to 12 weeks from when you say go to us having funds available to do the construction projects. The process involves gathering data. I've worked very closely with Ruth and put together financial and demographic data. I've worked with all of the municipalities to gather their data around housing values, wealth levels, employment. All of those things go in the mix that you will see in that booklet, those two booklets that I've passed around. We then go down to Boston and meet with the rating agencies. And in this case, we have one rating with standard and pause. So, we would make a presentation to them to try to be upgraded, certainly to maintain the rating we have, but to push for an upgrade. And it's always part of that process. So, the higher the rating we get, the lower the borrowing cost. What happens then is this booklet that is put together with all of this data goes out into the national marketplace. And we receive competitive bids on the bonds. And we may get, in some cases, I've had two or three bids. I've had as many as 10 or 11 bids. Those bids come in and on a day certain, we will make the award to the lowest responsible bidder. That process then takes about two more weeks after that before we have a closing. So, it's out in the world of municipal finance for a couple of weeks. We have a bid opening and then we close about two weeks later. So, it's about 10 to 12 weeks from start to finish. There are costs involved in doing any type of project. And the cost of issuance of the bonds is going to range between about $30,000 and $40,000, including bond council. So, there's a fee for my services as financial advisor. There's a rating fee. There's the printing and production of these booklets. There is the electronic bidding service where the bids come in. And all of that goes into the mix. And that will add up to about $30,000 to $40,000 to do this $5.2 million bond issue. The bigger the bond issue, the higher the cost. But there's a set base level of about $30,000 to $40,000 to do a bond issue of this size. One of the important things is, as we go through this process at the outset, is decide how much of the $5.2 million that was authorized are we going to need to spend? At this point, it hasn't been determined, because we haven't gone out to bid for the various parts of the projects, exactly where those costs will come in. So, it could be that the whole $5.2 million will be issued or some lesser amount that would satisfy the needs of the schools. When that is decided, that's when we would fix the amount that comes out to bid. We may go through a process where we don't have the numbers for a while on all of those pieces and we would issue what's known as a bond anticipation note. Really, it's what's known as construction financing. That would get us to the point where we had firm numbers on what the final financing would be and then we go out and do the permanent financing. I prefer not to do that because you're really doubling up on the issuance cost. So, the earlier we know the numbers that we are going to need of the $5.2 or lesser amount, the earlier that that is firmed up, then we will be able to go out to bid for that amount. What happens is then, when those funds come in, they are repaid over a 10-year period. Generally, it's every six months for interest and once a year for principal. So, it's not like your home mortgage where you make a payment every month. So, twice a year interest and once a year principal. But we can stagger that and make that fit into your budget needs. For instance, we could put up the first principal payment out at fiscal '15 or '16. And so, we can work with that schedule, work with the debt that you have on the books now so that as it's coming off, we infill with this new debt so we don't have to spike up in your budget. So, that planning process is very important around not only how much we bond, but then how do we repay it? And so, we'll work with staff, we'll work with the committee and making sure that that all dovetails neatly. So, when it's done, we pass it on to future boards that they're going to see that this debt all works. One of the big things that we need to look forward on is what other debt needs might the district be having in the next two, five, eight, 10 years so that we make sure that we plan for that as well. So, there's some forward thinking that's involved in that. That's the most important part of this whole process. The mechanical part of issuing the bonds is the easy part. It's really the thinking part of what do we need to bond? When do we need to bond it? And how are we going to repay it? So that it all works for future budgets as they come up. That's really the process now. The earlier we can get started, the faster you get the money, the faster you get the money, the faster you can do the projects. So, this is really the front-end loading of spending the money on the bond issues, getting this planning done.
We have a certain time period in which, once the money... Once we... Once the bond is issued, we have to spend the money out in a... I'll let you finish that sentence.
Right, when you hit $5 million, you fall under the IRS spending rules. And there are spending rules that would need to be adopted. And generally speaking, you're looking at 24 to 30-month spending rule. Whether you pick the 18 or the 24 or the 30 months, you then have to spend that in accordance with the schedule. So, we meet benchmarks every six months as to how much is flowing out. You can't bond this and then sit on the money for three years and then start spending. So, it needs to move along in a logical way. That's to avoid what happened way back. These laws came, these rules came into effect in 1986. There was a lot of abuses going on. They'd be borrowing from projects and the money was just sitting there earning interest. Excess interest when you can really earn interest. And they weren't building the projects. There were all kinds of things going on. So, now it's set out so that when you become more than a small borrower and that's the $5 million mark, then you have to follow these rules more closely. Even if it's under $5 million, you have to spend it in a judicious way. You have to move the project ahead.
Any other questions from the board or Steve, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I just... As Patrick mentioned, I think as Patrick mentioned, you know, we were, you know, timing this in a way that we get bids in. I don't know whether or not that's the time that we establish this... Develop this timeline so that we can ensure that in fact, all this work is done within the 24, 30-month period. Or whether or not we proceed now as a board or maybe Patrick does it administratively, just asking Dick to get going on the back line. And starting to develop the bond package, which, as I understand, we can develop and just... It just goes in the file until we're ready to pull the trigger, basically.
Absolutely. I think it makes sense to get ahead in the game. And then as, you know, as that crystal ball starts to gel and you start to really see, okay, here's where we are. You don't need to get it down to that, we're going to spend $5.12, $3 million. You're going to get it to a point where you're going to have a contingency in there. Could be 8%, 10%, whatever that might be. Once you start to get comfortable with projects and getting quotes in from contractors and your engineers, that you can feel good about the number, that you know you're going to spend $5, let's go ahead and do it. And if you know that it's going to be $5.2 and you're going to pay some back, then let's go do the $5.2. So, I would say between now and the spring months, that those numbers got to get firmed up. And so, as those get firmed up, I can be working with Ruth to put the bones together on this booklet. It's called a prospectus or an official statement and have it ready to go. We can always change the number. We can always change the repayment debt. Those are easy to do. It's just gathering that now. Because I've got two to three weeks worth of work to do that sort of thing. So, let's get that kind of, as I say in the movie, it's in the can, ready to go.
It's my understanding that even if we don't hit the number, if we're under the number, that those funds can be used to apply to the interest and the principal payment bond, so...
If, for instance, you said, okay, we feel good about the $5.2, we issue it all. At the end of the day, you spent $5,100,000. There's $100,000 left over. See, everything is done, everything great. Everything came in on time, which it won't happen. Everything came in on the budget on time, just like Bath Iron Works builds the ships. That would be great. But let's say you do have some left over. That money then can go into escrow and be applied towards interest with the principal payments. So, we won't run afoul of the rules. We can't just put that there, say, in the kitty and do something else with it, such as operating costs. You need to go into an escrow or sinking fund for repaying all the debt. You cannot prepay this debt and say, you know, we've got $100,000, let's put it on the principal. That can't happen. But you can pay on the interest as it comes through. Because once those bonds are out there, in a 10-year situation, they're not callable. They're not fundable. They're not... In our world, we call it fundable. They're not refinancingable.
I don't know, Dean, you know, this did not... We're sort of off actions of the committee at this point, just my own comments because we didn't have this information when we met originally, when the committee met at the beginning of the month. But the interest rates are very favorable. There was some discussion of whether we might seek, pursue possibility of conventional financing as opposed to issuing a bond. But I think the rates are going to come in around the same, if not a little bit more. But we'll be closing costs. Might give, you know, a few dollar savings, but nothing significant in that regard. And I think Dick has a relationship with... Knows the district. And I think it would be quite easy to work with Dick on this. And to move as quickly as we can, given, I mean, and probably, obviously, we don't have numbers on the project. But move as quickly as we can to take advantage of the rates where they're up because they aren't going to stay at this level for long. They're not going to... They can't go much lower. They can't possibly go anywhere. But they can go up and it would be a shame, you know, to lose that, to lose the opportunity here. We're not going to get two or two and a half. That's probably not with our rating. We don't know.
On a 10-year, I think we're going to be no higher than two and a half today. Next month is a different picture, but today, I think that's where we are.
So, Dick, let me ask you. As you talk about these initial steps of gathering data to prepare the information, the way I understand it is part of what you're doing is gathering demographic information about the community to take to the rating houses. And based on the rating of the community, that will determine our interest rate. The other gathering of data that's occurring is, you alluded to getting bids, specs for the jobs, identifying the jobs that we want to do. From your perspective and from the issuers of the bonds or the folks who bid on this, how detailed does that information need to be for them to offer a bid?
They couldn't care less if you were building a building and buying a box of jelly beans, quite frankly. They're going to be buying the bonds. It's the full faith and credit of the district behind it. Whether the project is underfinanced or overfinanced is really irrelative to that. They are buying paper. Now, having said that, if it blew up in the newspaper, then, you know, this thing is just all haywire. And we're just all ready to sell, that would not normally bode well. They like things that they have and count them all. But the bottom line is, we're going to have in there that it was authorized by the voters for $5.2 million to do A, B, and C. And that's all we put in the prospectus. All of that other work, the engineering and the bidding of the work and all of that, that's up to your facilities manager and your facilities committee to deal with that.
So, what if, using your example, what if A, B, and C became A and B? Or A, B, C, and D? Does that impact?
Well, also that we'll be doing is really reciting what the referendum question said. The voters approved spending $5.2 million on renovations for Moss High School and this and this and this.
Got you.
So, we'll just take that verbatim. That gets plugged in. It was approved on such and such a date by the voters. End of story.
So, the projects don't have to be specific down to the nuts and bolts or we're going to do this floor, we're going to do that room?
No.
Okay.
You just have to work within the box that the voters gave you.
Right.
They told you to do these three things, you can do those.
Okay.
There is a pitch, rating agency, however, which Dick and perhaps members of the board, Patrick, perhaps, would make to discuss the project, to present the project, hopefully in enthusiastic...
Absolutely.
Enthusiastic manner or so.
What will happen is they'll hone in first. One of the discussion points that will happen with the rating agencies is the spending of this $5.2 million. What are we going to do? What does that accomplish? And we're going to get into all of... This is the forerunner to hopefully, you know, within this 10-year window, that will be coming up on the list of the state for replacement or complete renovation of Moss High School. And so, we're doing this to bridge that gap. We're doing these other projects for these reasons. Those are all good reasons. So, we explain to the rating agencies, who does care? They do care about what are you doing and why are you doing it? And then what's the long-range planning for your capital approval program for the whole district? What else is on the horizon? What else is coming down to talk to us about in future years? So, they're really forward-looking in that regard.
Any other questions from the board, Dick? And... None? Okay, it's my understanding that we're going to talk further about what the next steps are during tonight's meeting. But that said, is there anything that you need from the board? Is there anything that you need us to do in order to initiate the process? Okay.
Well, that's up to you to decide what you want to do during follow-up. Be with me, with somebody else, maybe with the one council question and all that. I certainly would love to do the job. Enjoyed working with Ruth and with Patrick. And so, we look forward to doing the project, but that's up to you.
Yeah, and I think, as I said, I think it's our intent to discuss that at tonight's meeting, so...
I'll leave you to that. Right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Dick. Okay, Steve, anything else from the board? Okay, Steve, anything else from the finance committee?
No.
All right, we'll move on to item 8.2, facilities committee report. And I'll turn that over to Bill.
Thank you. Facilities has been since the bond was approved. And the first order of business for us was for Dave Richards, the facilities director, to come in and update us on the progress that he was making and the plans that he was developing to implement the various projects. And that's in his hands. He, of course, has gone through this with bond issue before here, so he has a good handle on the things that he has to do. Engineering studies, all of the factors that will have to be poured into each of the projects so that we can move forward with the presentation for the bonding issue there. That went very well. And beyond that, Facilities needs to look at developing subcommittees, which we had discussed previously, to start taking this long and serious look at a plan for elementary education in RSU One, which is built into the justification for the bond issue. And also a separate group that we've discussed before of prominent local leaders, community leaders, to start working on the Morse renovation or relocation. I understand that the debate was inconclusive, but very well done. I was looking to Kyle tonight to give us some leadership on that issue, but he said that all of the facts were out there and very well presented, but it wasn't judged. So we don't know what the results of that debate were. But those are the two groups that we're looking to bridge together. Whether they're, the committee on Morse, we've discussed before, has determined that it should be a community-wise and area-wide grouping of people, preferably alumni who have gone on and have such great emotional ties to Morse. We want their full support in Morse planning. The elementary group, the committee didn't come up with anything specific yet around that. We need to in our next meeting, we had discussion around it, bringing PTO people from each of the schools, or community leaders from each of the communities together to work on that issue. But we're not quite there yet.
Okay, any questions for Bill on facilities? I've got one. Can you talk to me, or maybe Patrick can talk to me or the rest of the board, about how you foresee the process going forward? We had established a list, and I know Dave has kind of hit the ground running with this list. Some jobs require bids, some jobs don't require bid. How is that whole process going to play out? And what should we expect in terms of timing on when we'll have final numbers on doing those projects and sort of hard and fast list to move forward on?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing we have to do, which I'm not sure that everybody was aware of, what we need to go up to bid for an architectural or engineering firm. And we have to follow the Bureau of General Services from the state. We have to, you know, get on their website, which we started to do, fill out the proper paperwork. Because even though this is an already state-funded project, it does look different. They are public schools, and it does impact Bureau of General Services. So they will look over our specs and our plans that our architectural and engineering firms will do. So that's where we have to start. And it has to be advertised in a local paper as well as the Augusta paper. So there's some hoops that we have to jump through. So that's the first piece that we have to work with. And then we would make a decision as a system, which out of those, say, 30 items, the big ticket items would be, the architect or the engineer would be specking those out and those would go up to bid. They take the windows, for example, that would be a good example of that. When it comes to some of the smaller items, like the secure front entrances, those are ones that we're hoping to be able to handle locally, because it makes sense. There are a lot less, you know, the amount is a lot less. The job is not necessarily every single job, the small ones have to go up to bid, but the major ones will go up to bid. And we will follow, you know, and all, we don't want to go on our website for that. I know we have a lot of policies, but we have a very specific policy around our bid process. So what they did services, it tells you the amount of money, and if it's over that amount, then we need to go up to bid. And what I mean by that is, you know, we see a lot of folks that would come into our office. So we're trying to come up with a process that would be very efficient and effective instead of having one one day, you know, and just getting overwhelmed with a lot of different bids. So that's kind of the process in first part is like the architectural engineering firm, and finding out, determining what kind of oversight we want them to do for us as well.
And timeframe on that?
We're working on it. I mean, the architectural and engineering one in EGS, you know, I returned a couple of phone calls to them today and talking about it. So, you know, my goal would be the next couple of weeks that we can, you know, have this work with EGS and put it out to bid. And hopefully, I'm not just guessing, but before the holiday break, the next holiday break, that we would have an architectural engineering firm decide on the bond.
I get the very strong feeling that Dave had hit the ground running and was very anxious to get this project moving. All of these, he has to basically provide you with all of the materials necessary to go forward with the forms, and he's very much aware of them.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, management of the project is just important, is an important thing to focus on. And I'm not sure, again, how you can break the project up and have an architectural or engineering firm be project manager on some of the larger pieces and maybe some of the smaller stuff can be done in-house. My concern, without, you know, thinking too much about it up to this point, but my concern about doing a lot of this work in-house is that we're sort of drawing on the same maintenance staff that's required to do other kinds of functions and duties. I'm just very mindful that in last year's budget, we added a maintenance person to Dave's team because he said he had work to demand. And I would hate to see those resources peeled off and refocused on other things. And that frankly includes part of Dave's side as well. You know, we still need to maintain our facilities and our campus, or campuses. And just as we sort of make those decisions on what we can do and what we can't, you know, we have a lot of work, that more routine kind of work and responsibilities that the maintenance folks need to stay focused on as well. So it's going to be a dance, I understand that. But I hope we're not, we're not again diminishing our maintenance folks to accomplish some of the stuff that, you know, it might cost us a little bit more to bid this stuff out and do it out, you know, to not do it with our in-house resources. But we're paying for those in-house resources as well. So their lost work in terms of concentrating or focusing on our facilities has caused the RSU, you know, as well as having to go outside, hire contractors to do work that might otherwise have been done by, what's in the rural security books. So I'm not sure how all that fits together, but I trust Patrick will guide us through.
Yeah, I think it's important, as it goes along, if we just got either updates from you, Patrick, or an update from the facilities committee that here's a list of the projects that we're looking at, these following fall under the oversight of the firm that we hired, these following fall under the oversight of someone else. Maybe Dave Richards, maybe somebody else, maybe it's a local contractor. So that if anything does ever arise, we can go back and say, here was the point person on this particular project, here's the one that's accountable. Instead of, you know, you often see, and we saw at Woolwich, where you get, oh, this was them, no, this was them, and you certainly went through that in the building, so.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things that take place in this. Probably five big companies have made that are architectural firms, engineering firms, and the amount of liability and insurance that they have, and the experience that they have, you know, makes you wonder, you know, should you go with one of those bonds? It could be more than 10% of the amount of the bond that you're spending on an architectural engineering firm if you have them do all of the oversight, you know, all of the, everything that goes with. Just, you know, so again, it's that, you know, bringing it to your attention that this is how much it's going to cost, when it's one firm that can be held accountable if the windows don't go in right, if, you know, something goes wrong, instead of piecemealing and, you know, then having to, you know, find someone, you know, a small contractor that may not have the liability. So there's all those factors that we're trying to keep on the table and make sure that we give this thought before we recommend much way to go.
As all of these projects and all of the information becomes available, we'll look to you to feed that back to us, and Dave will probably keep doing the light work, but.
Okay. Any other discussion on facilities? And we will move on to item 9.0, superintendent's report. We'll begin with 9.1. Patrick?
Yeah, if you didn't see it, I don't know if you sent it out to us via email, but it was just kind of fun, it was on Channel 6, I think it aired last week, Monday or Tuesday, on, it was called Drums Alive Class. And actually, Dave Richards' wife teaches Zuma in the area, and she also works at Mary McColly at that school. It's a new part of our PE curriculum, and it's called Drums Alive. They're using stability balls along with drumsticks with first and second graders over there. And it's just a great way, in case they have fun, but also exercise the brain. And so we speak it on Channel 6, so if you didn't get that link, I can send it to you. But it was well done, and the staff and the students, I think, got a big kick out of it. We received a grant from Davinport Association, and that is really focused on the high school. And it's an organization at a forum called Project Aware. And it's really for high school students to do public announcements on sensitive issues or, you know, hot topics. It could be texting and driving, it could be drinking and driving, it could be peer pressure, sexual assault, harassment, those types of things. And so it's a great way, Brunson High School does a lot, Portland High School, it's a great way for students to learn about those issues, teach them how to write about the issues, present about the issues. And also, some kids take a real liking to kind of the movie-making aspect of it. And so Davinport really liked the idea, helped to fund it. And we're hoping to have anywhere from 50 to 70 students involved in that over the next two years in some shape or form. So it will be after school, and it will be done initially by Project Aware personnel. So it's really a kind of exciting project that other high schools have. At the middle school, we're in the process of signing a agreement that's no cost to the district when it comes to restorative practices. And really, that's just a way of staff and administration working with students and working with families in a very positive way. But if there are issues that need to be addressed, it's taking a different approach than the traditional discipline approach. It's really having more conversations about how you improve the culture of climate, maybe learning from the other states. Still have consequences about learning from the other states and really adding to the culture of the building. So Chuck Softman, who covered it maybe before, he is involved, was involved in getting us a grant, an agreement, as well as a couple of other students in Maine. So it does mean that, but, and it's part of his goals this year, but that there is going to be a fair amount of professional development at BMS regarding this approach. And I think it's, you know, really a kudos to the middle school staff that, you know, had BMS. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Parent conferences, we're very involved, we're attended, I think you saw some things in your backup, the amount of conferences that we had at some of our schools was impressive. We had student-led conferences for the first time at West Bath. That, you know, staff were nothing but positive comments from. And we did things a little bit at Woolwich this year, and again, very positive comments. So it had great turnout for all of our schools. Well, Hyatt was last week, once again, I was entertained by students and the talent that was displayed. And just to have that many students that will get up on stage and take a chance and show their talent is impressive. And so, thank you for that. And last but not least, thank you to the board for supporting Ferry Beach Ecology School again. The seventh graders had a great time with the staff. And it's very, received compliments from Ferry Beach of our students, and they really had a good time.
Okay. Any questions for Patrick? Okay, we'll move on to financial report. You can either use that or if you just want to speak close to that, whichever one you feel most comfortable with.
I can repeat to be, I don't even. What you have in front of you is the report ending in October. And it may look a bit optimistic. I'm trying to stand out on a high note so that we have, you know, a long ways to follow, but hopefully we don't. I've encumbered a number of the latter items that I anticipate spending, but there are a lot of supplies yet that could still be encumbered throughout the year that would probably bring that balance down. I'm hopefully optimistic to be in maybe the $500,000 range at the end of the year. And you'll, I think you'll see on your report, halfway down the page, you'll see in italics, the main purse number. As you remember, we're starting to pick up some of the cost of mainstay retirement, 2.65%. The system isn't working right, it's not encumbering within the payroll. So we've had to do a manual estimate, that's why that's put in there, until we can get ADS to incorporate it within the encumbering system. And then I did notice on the revenue side, remember how we're going to receive $360,000 more in state subsidy? But we're not going to end up with $362,000 more at the end. I forgot to subtract that same amount from the local, you know, municipalities that are paying. They will come in that much less. So revenues right now, I'm anticipating coming in at what we estimated. Any questions?
Any questions for Ruth? Okay, thank you, Ruth. All right, we'll move on to full business. The first item is, this is an action item, to adopt the 2013-2014 board goals. We've been working on these for two or three meetings now. Hopefully, we've got this in final draft form. Is there a motion on this? Who will we adopt the goals? Okay. Motion to adopt by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Alan?
I'm sorry to see that the goal for food service was eliminated from 104.
I think, I'd have to go back to the minutes, but I think it was something that we had talked about. But because we had such a large number of goals, we had whittled that one down. There was just a lot to tackle for this year, and that's how I recall it going down. But again, I'd have to reference back to the minutes. I don't think it was at the last meeting, I think it was at our prior meeting. We had an awful lot of goals that had come out of the goals workshop that we had done. And I think that was one of a couple that we had whittled down to make this more manageable list of goals. Kyle?
Mr. Argens, I have a question on goal number three. I, it seems to be that pursuing the renovation law, for the most part, we've already achieved that and getting it passed. we've already achieved that and getting it passed. I wonder if there is maybe more precise and stronger language that we could use, perhaps implement the projects provided for in the renovation bond, especially after hearing the reports from Mr. August, Mr. Perkins, and Mr. Red again about where we are at that stage of it.
Yeah, I certainly, if we could make a change there, if somebody would like to propose some language.
Talk about executing the bond.
So change it from pursue to execute. Okay?
Yeah, we're going to wordsmith this. Also, now that he's opened up the door. In that goal three, we talked about educationally adequate facilities. And adequate to me has sort of a negative, you know, has a, well, we're going to get by kind of meaning to it. And I wondered if we could achieve an estate and educationally sound facilities, educationally exemplary, I mean, we're trying to achieve that once.
Sure.
And I guess it's just a...
Sort of put us sort of at bare minimum.
Yeah.
Are we good with the bare minimum?
We're adequate, but we're, we're better than that.
Well, yeah.
You suggesting some phrase?
You know, I don't have a word on the tip of my tongue. I wasn't going to raise it, I noticed it, but I wasn't going to raise it unless someone ever raised other issues. So blame him, but, educational, even educationally sound is...
Sound is fine.
Is a somewhat, projects a, I think a stronger sense of where we technically are.
Safe and quality education, which is education. I was saying, I'm sure I'm not. See, you must have measured that.
So why don't we replace, let's replace the word adequate with sound, replace the word pursue with execute. There is a motion on the floor, though, are you willing to amend that motion to include those changes?
I move we amend. Well, and actually, I didn't notice this before, but in goal, under goal one, the first bullet, and request that from the, from appropriate staff. Oh, it is, and end, okay. See, I didn't mention, I didn't mention, I didn't agree. I move that we amend, we adopt the goals as amended.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Robin?
Goal number four. I, on several occasions, have had the opportunity to speak with Rosalie about, you know, this, the evaluation tool and whatnot. And Dave, I know you have met with her as well. It sounds like she has that tool, and she has lots of data. So, you know, do we need this comprehensive of a statement? Maybe more that, you know, the presentation, you know, of this data to the board, you know, by the end of the year, at some point during the school year, would be more appropriate since it doesn't need to be developed? I mean, she's got a lot in place, is that, are we on the same? I'm going to try to misunderstand her.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
Absolutely, and I concur. I think she does have the tool. As a matter of fact, I've gone over it with her and looked at the data, which is very impressive, and I think would impress the board. I don't know, and she asked me at one point whether I did, know, if there was any other tool that she could apply and satisfy this goal requirement. And I couldn't provide her with any additional suggestions beyond what she'd already developed. So I think it's a matter of, as you have indicated, present the data that she has. And I discussed with her the possibility in terms of a date, and she said she was ready to present it at any time.
Yeah, well, I mean, what we're going to do when we finalize this is we'll build it into a schedule and get that out to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
We, we actually went up today, Rosalie, myself, and some people from Laugus, testified about LD 1350 that Senator Quinlan put in that now that he's not there, LV is, but LV is, you know, going with that effort. And so it was very nice for RSU One to be recognized as a leader in the state. But Rosalie just got back from a national conference, and some of the things we heard today, I mean, I think it's healthy for any organization, especially with pre-K, is, you know, it's not just about giving an assessment for our kids, for our identification, and, you know, other academic pieces. It's also about that family involvement, that maybe we don't always can do as good as we want, three days a week, half-days. But, you know, there's other measuring sticks that I think we need to talk about. And Rosalie and I were just talking about that today at Augusta, so I think it's, I mean, I think it's okay to leave it like it is. We have some tools in place, but I think we can always ask ourselves, are those the right ones? And she would be adding something else in.
Well, I think it needs to be on that way, but...
Right, and then I'd then report the data to you. So I, I think, you know, I talked about this, I think she's comfortable, and she'd come in here and give you an honest reflection on where we're at.
I, I, I for one, wouldn't mind seeing this, seeing the tool or the, you know, measurement piece before she completes the evaluation. I mean, I need to go through this process and still come up with a bunch of questions, you know, at the end of the year, or at the end of her presentation. So if, if she has a, if there's something that she can share with the board in terms of, I know you just indicated there are other, there are other tools or other things that you'd like to have her reflect on, I mean, if there's, if there's something she could, she could share early on before she goes through the process, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, is there any more discussion on the goals? All right, there's a motion on the floor to accept the goals as written with a couple of amendments. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, we'll move on to, we have some second readings of policy. Item 10.2, second reading of policy EHA, student enrollment information and reports. This is an action item. Is there a motion?
Some.
Move to...
Pass.
Pass? Seconded by Kyle?
There is one typo over the red, if you didn't catch it, which should be 2012, April 2012 and October 2012 for board, just zero left now, I don't think so.
Any further discussion on this policy? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. That passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 10.3, second reading of policy JFABD, admission of homeless students. Is there a motion? Alan moves to approve, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Unopposed, none, that one passes. Okay, second reading, item 10.4, second reading of policy JEA, compulsory attendance. Is there a motion on this? Move to approve by Robin, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? I still, we talked about this at the last meeting, and I still don't think that there's clarification, and I could be wrong. Under, under item B, we have A, it says persons who graduate from high school before their 17th birthday. And then item B, number one, it says, reach the age of 15 years or completed the ninth grade, which to me is contradictory to item A.
Yeah, and one through C, and B, one through C. I know it can be a little confusing, but we, well, since last month, we've gone back, and we've, just clarified it is, you know, we, we see the semicolons in there, and we add it has, and we add it or, and we're trying to make it, I know it's a little confusing, but you can't just be number one and be okay. You have to be number one, and then you also have to have number two, number three, number four, and number five. Does that make sense? So in other words, if you've reached age 15 and completed ninth grade, and then you have permission from your parents to move forward with this, then you have to be approved for a work, you know, work, study, or training. And then you have to have permission from, you know, the board or myself. You know, so that's, those all, B kind of all is clumped together, and then or, you just go down to C.
Okay, so my suggestion is, if you look at how number four is worded, has permission to leave school from the board of directors or its designee, semicolon, and, I think there should be an and after the semicolon in one, an and after the semicolon in two, an and after the semicolon in three. So it's reached the age of 15 and has permission and... So could we amend that motion? Can we include that? Any further discussion on this one?
So A is separate, correct?
Yep.
So shouldn't it be or after A also? Should it be a person who graduated high school before something or?
Yeah.
And B, as we do again, for C. It looks like A.
Could do that, and we'll further clarify it. So we have an amendment to add or after the semicolon in A, and then and after the semicolons in items one through three, under B. All right. Motion on the floor to accept with the amendment, all those in favor? None opposed, that passes. Okay, item 10.5, second reading of policy GCG, substitute teacher procedures. Is there a motion? Move to accept, move to approve by Bill, seconded by Kyle. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, under new business, item 11.1, we have few retirements here. I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Yeah, it's like to recognize and thank these people for their years of service in the system. First, we have Maggie Woodruff, who's an elementary teacher at Woolwich, 30 years, this is her 30th year in RSU One. Ed Spryski, also a middle school teacher at Woolwich, and he has 23 years, I think I'm accurate, I think he had 15 in June 47, he left for a little while, came back to RSU One for another eight years, so 23 years total. And then Jim Warren, who's a grade six teacher at BMS, who also was a principal at Pittsburgh for a little bit of time, early in his career, 17 years of service in RSU One, so I'd like to thank him.
Okay, on to item 11.2, first reading of policy AC, non-discrimination, opportunity, and affirmative action. Any comments, questions on this policy?
What we're, what we're trying to do, Dave, you can chime in here too, is, you know, I know when you look at this agenda, you might, or somebody might think, geez, we've got a problem with harassment in the system. But what we're trying to do is try to go through alphabetically our policies now, and look at which ones we need to update, or which ones we don't have that we need to have. And so you'll see that coming through from now on, it's, you know, just going through alphabetically, just to keep us a little bit more organized.
Okay. We'll move on to first reading, item 11.3, first reading of policy ACAA, harassment and sexual harassment of students. Any comments, questions on this? I'm just curious why, under this particular policy, it has a title current policy. You know why?
We gave, we gave you two.
I see.
We gave you two, one is the proposed one, and the current policy.
Gotcha.
Just so you can see the difference.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to first reading of policy ACAA-R, harassment and sexual harassment complete procedure. Any questions, concerns on this one? Okay, item 11.5, first reading of policy ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. Comments on this?
I'm, looking down through here, I see nothing that's related to work-related. I'd like people to think about. I have heard a number of complaints from staff about being harassed because they go above and beyond what is done. And always talking about labor relations and things, and it's a tricky one to talk about. But still, I don't think if somebody steps up to the plate and does something because they feel it is necessary to be done, that they should be harassed for doing it. If we were asking somebody to do something, and it is a violation, but what they think it's a violation in contract, that's another issue. But if you step up and do something out of goodwill to take care of a situation that's necessary, I think that should be the end of it. You didn't have to put up with agreements with other people. So I want you to think about that, and see if maybe we should put something in this, or some ways to handle such situations.
Is this something that we could include in this policy?
It could be here, or maybe what we need to do is make any position with the board, but we will not tolerate this 10%, I don't know.
I think that would definitely fall in the policy.
I think it's something to think about, that we'll get how to be added.
Would you be willing to draft some language for the next, before we miss this first reading? Draft some language for the next meeting before we vote on it?
No problem.
Okay. Any other comments on this particular policy? Okay, we'll move on.
Can I go back to the student discrimination? Current procedure?
Sure.
Under procedures B, the number B, the paragraph B, Patrick and Dave, they use the, use the word expect, you know, school staff are expected to report. Is that, does that track state legislation or state language? Or, you know, expected as opposed to required to report?
On page one.
Page two, too.
I, I wasn't, you know, I had the last policy meeting, I should be there, but I can certainly double check that.
I don't think we could discuss this particular procedural. But I, but I think your point is, is, you'd say something expected, it's all... it's almost an option, kind of, yes, an option. Whereas we would like that. In addition to that, to whom are the school staff supposed to report in such incidents? I don't see that specified there. And I wonder if that might be something that would be important to have clarification.
Well, under, under the complete handling of...
It may be good to put it in there, that's on the best suggestion. It's also, if you turn to page three, you know, it walks the people through, you know, building finishment, and then AAO is a part of the action.
Oh, sorry.
But, you know, it's not at that point, Dave, it's on page three, so.
Yeah. There was some discussion in the policy committee about the gender of the complaint versus the exact, the gender of the recipient of the complaint, whether they should be carefully matched, in other, in other words, to avoid any embarrassment. And I think that probably will be a welcome addition.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this particular policy? Okay, again, it'd be helpful if you could prepare some language for changes for the next meeting. Because we will be voting on that.
But if you, you know, if you do want to suggest something, I mean, you can either do one of, well, probably the easiest thing is email me that. And then the policy committee, I don't have the date with me, but we meet again before our next school board meeting. So if you have language you want to send, then we can talk about it in the policy committee before it officially comes back to you.
Okay. The last one is first reading of policy ACAB-R, employee discrimination and harassment complaint. Any comments, questions on this one? All right, we'll move on to item 11.7. And I had written in here, recommendation for moving forward with bond, I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Yeah, like we mentioned before, just to move forward with this bond, you know, it really is advisable either way. It's just to inform you tonight of who I think is best to go with and not take a vote, or if you feel more comfortable, you know, the board can choose to take a vote. But we did talk about going out and at least getting another proposal from somebody else for bond council, as well as for financial advisory services. You know, Dick Ranigan has come and met with us. He did the last bond. He was one of two people, and I think in Duinglewood, there's probably only two or three people that can do the type of work that he's talking about. And so we went out and we got packages from two different people, Dick being one of them. And I just found that from references to history, to the competitive rates that he's been able to get, and again, going back to his references, were very impressive. And also just, you know, having the knowledge of working with him, and him having the history of the district, you know, I would recommend Dick Ranigan from Warham Savings to do the financial advisory piece. And then on the bond council piece, we asked two different firms to give us a quote, "not to exceed" for the typical council that you would want. And the one that I'm recommending tonight to you is Bill Stockmeyer from Toronto Woodsom. And his, not only was it lesser of a price, it was also just the package that was put together, and the, you know, again, the references and the history and the experiments was impressive. So, so those are the two items that we need to, you know, solidify some meeting before with this project, like we've been talking about this.
Any questions for Patrick on those choices? We don't necessarily need to take a formal vote, but I think it might be helpful, you know, for the minutes, if the board did take some sort of informal action on this. Before we do that, I just want to make sure that we've addressed any questions or concerns the board might have with those two choices. Would you prefer, should you just take a formal vote?
Yeah, it would occur.
I mean, we want to keep this as transparent as possible. Dick was here, you know, obviously tonight. He knew that we may not go with him, and he doesn't know that we're, you know, we're settling on him tonight, and I haven't communicated that to him. But again, I think on the low end, we're talking high twenties for advisory services, as well as bond council. And I would say mid to high thirties would be the highest that we would be spending.
Oh, okay.
Again, both, both pieces.
Would someone like to make a motion?
So are we just voting on the, on the recommendation to improve it, just based on our evaluation? Do we need to have this process? I mean...
What it is, is what we would, what we would be voting on is basically just a, sort of a nod of approval to Patrick. We need to have banking council, and we need to have legal council for this process. And so Patrick's met with, I guess, you said, two different parties for both legal and for banking, and he's just recommending we go with Dick on the banking side and Bill Stockmeyer on the legal side. Basically, the board's supporting, you know, the work that, the recommendation that Patrick's making.
I'll make the motion that we proceed with going to Savings as, for issuance and development of bond, and with, with Toronto Woodsom, Toronto Woodsom for bond council.
Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. We'll move on to the final public comment section. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. Before we go on to set next meeting date and time, I just want to take a couple minutes. I don't feel as though I adequately addressed Alan's concerns about the goals, and I'd like to make sure that we do that. It was my understanding with the goals, and historically, what we've done, a lot of times we create, we used to create, the board used to create goals in the middle of the year. And a few years ago, we went to the policy of having a goal meeting prior to the start of the school year, which we did this year. And I think it was an inclusive process. We came up with a long list of goals, and then those goals, that list has been recycled and edited and changed over the past three board meetings. And so I just want to make sure that I'm adequately representing what's transpired with the goals, and that you feel your questions or your concerns have been addressed.
My concerns aren't addressed until something is done. I'm looking at a situation that I think is a very critical part of the educational process. There was questions about the quality of service. Are we doing the best that we can in meeting these needs? I know, for example, for a fact that one of the schools does not show anything hot for kids in the morning for breakfast. This is a concern of mine. And I think we ought to take a look at, can we correct some of these things? And why I think we don't.
But I think the point I need to make, and I need to get feedback from the board if I've handled the process improperly. I'm not downplaying your need for a specific goal. I think we all brought goals to the table, and I'm not weighing one goal over another. But I, it was my understanding that over the past two or three meetings, we as a board looked at a long list of goals and narrowed it down to the list that we have today. The list that we have today isn't a new list. It's the same list that was at the last meeting and at the previous meeting. And again, I don't, I'm not downplaying the importance of what you're suggesting. I think it's something that we need to address as a district. But I felt as a board that that was one thing that we decided, we just had so many goals on the list, that that wasn't, we weren't going to try and tackle everything this year. But did I misunderstand that? I'd like to hear from someone else on the board, because if I did, we can add it back, or we can continue to work on this list.
I don't think we misinterpreted, you know, what we wanted to include. And it was a very substantial list, and it was pared down to a workable area. And workable is the issue. Your particular issue probably can be addressed during our development of next year's budget, when we meet with the cost centers, and if we meet with food service, let's talk about it and see what we can do to remediate the future evaluation. I don't see it being a goal yet.
I don't remember when it has kind of changed, but I know that Patrick was mentioning that there was something that was going to happen in food service and evaluation. And all that, and all that happens, and we had talked about that would be a starting point. You know, when we look at that ahead, we'd make some decisions from there. I think that's how it had lasted a number of days. It's a critical point that we're...
I understand that that state evaluation is only going to affect three of the eight kitchens that we have. So I don't think that gives us, that broad a picture.
You know, I think it's true, January is when we have that review. Is that anytime, I mean, it goes back to what we talked about maybe in September, is tried again. It's, I think it's hard for everybody. But regardless of what type of organization you're in, is, it's just like setting personal goals for yourself or organizational goals, is how to, how to frame those in a way that is, is bigger, so that there are goals, and then there are action steps underneath them, and it's focused on what we think are the most important things in the district. So if it's student achievement, if it's, you know, if it's student wellness, for example, if it's safety of our students, those bigger picture things. And like, for example, if it was well-being for our students, and food service was a component underneath that well-being, then, you know, that makes more sense to me. And again, this is, maybe you don't agree with me, that's kind of my personal opinion that our, like, you know, goals should be a little bit broader. It does not need, just like with anything else, that we can't have a meeting tomorrow, we can't have a meeting next week, or during these, you know, meetings that we have, is give updates, or put together a study group, or a, you know, ad hoc committee to look at something specific, you know, in our district that, you know, is a, is a passion, or something that we know we want to improve upon, but I mean, resources, financial or human resources. So, anyway.
Just again, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Alan, that it's something that needs to be addressed. We're in agreement there. The thing that I'm concerned about is, I think that as a board, we determined a list of goals two or three meetings ago. And I, and I think that that was one of four or five that had come off the list. And I just don't want, I want to make sure that that's the way the rest of the board understood it, because that was the whole purpose of the process, that we had that initial meeting, came up with a dozen items, and then we narrowed it down to a list. So again, I'm not debating whether or not it's worthy or not worthy. I definitely think that it's something worthy. But I thought as a group, back in September, that was something that we said, you know, we're going to narrow this list down to a handful of things that we can manage. Is that not how you remember it?
I don't recall that, but it's just...
Let me just...
I think we can accomplish, I recall, once Kyle mentioned the discussion of the audit, that that triggered a reflection. We thought that, that the audit might provide some insight into, into some questions or issues, where it might be, that it might help us focus on, on the food service folks. And again, just to, and also to build on Bill's comment, I think in the context of the budget discussion...
I wouldn't look for...
You know, we can, we can, we can look at this. I mean, we can, we can, you know, when the presentation happens, I mean, we can look at questions and issues as, as they're, as they've come to your attention. Because I know you spend a lot of time looking, working, well, you volunteer in one of the kitchens, so it's more than the rest of us, we don't think. And it is, it is something we can, we can focus on during those budget presentations and budget discussions.
So why don't we move in that direction? And again, just as a reminder to the board, I'll go back to the minutes. Back in September, Chairperson Harkins presented the draft list of board goals as discussed during their recent workshop, along with Superintendent Manuel's suggestion to rephrase the work done in the workshop into a goal format. And later on, it said Chairperson Harkins stated that he would refine the language and get a final copy back to the board. The board members were unanimously in favor of the four goals for this year as discussed. And then in the minutes that we just approved, if somebody has those handy, under board goals... Right. We tabled it, because I didn't get the final copy to the board.
Did you, did you file Mr. Harkins' I have it?
I did, oh, here we go. Yeah, this was from last meeting. Chairperson Harkins stated that he revised, that the revised board goals did not get typed up in time to be included in the packets this month. Superintendent Manuel will have them emailed out to the board in the morning. Dr. Manuel will review the goals and create a scheduled presentations throughout the year. So I feel that I got the goals in the format that you folks wanted back to you, and I think you had a chance to look at them. But again, if I've not been complete in the process, or you feel that we overlooked something, we can go back and revisit them. I just want to make sure that we didn't leave part of it out in the process.
I'm satisfied that we'll have a chance to address it. I think I have a consensus here that it will be addressed, so I'll be satisfied with that.
Okay. All right. So then we'll move on to item 13.0, set next meeting date and location. Do we have to change the original date that we had for the December meeting? There was some conflict.
Well, there's two weeks, two Mondays at the end of December, we don't have school. So December 16th would be, I don't know if you want to keep it on a Monday, that would be the next, that would be a logical time to have a board meeting in December. So I don't know if that works for you. It's not that far away, obviously.
So the 16th?
Yeah.
Does the 16th work for everyone else? Okay. So we will be 6:00 PM at Dagnall on the 16th. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Alan, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, raise your hand. Okay, we adjourned. Thank you, enjoy your Thanksgiving.